Any other orders, please? Silence of cell phones and pagers or any electronic devices that would interrupt the meeting. I'd like to turn this over to Councilman Byakowski, please.
Yeah, everyone, please stay seated for a minute. Most of us knew Dave Solly pretty well. This is in honor of him. Dave passed October 29th. He was a great friend to many of us. He served on the Republican Committee for many years. He was the chairman of the City Committee for several years. And he was very gracious. He hosted us at his home for caucuses and meetings. Him and his wife were very gracious to do that. Dave had quite a list of accomplishments. He served with pride as a volunteer fireman in Corfu for 44 years, which he often boasted about. He was a coach at the Pembroke High School mock trial team. He spent a lot of time with students. President of the Corfu Library, treasurer of St. Jerome Hospital Foundation. President of the Genesee County Bar, and he was a delegate to the State Judicial Nominating Committee for over 35 years. But his accomplishments were far more than that. I knew Dave pretty well. And when we appointed him to part-time city judge two years ago, he was totally dedicated to this position. He truly loved being a judge. Several months ago, I spoke with Dave one evening. He called me to tell me some good news he had. The tumor was in remission. And he was working that afternoon as a judge. And he was feeling a lot better. But he was a man of great moral and spiritual character. And he believed in his community fellow man. Dave demonstrated this. He served as a chaplain at the Erie County Correctional Facility. And he really believed in people getting a second chance, people turning their lives around, and people making something of themselves. He once told me that ending his career as a judge and a chaplain both was a great event in his life. We suffered a great loss. Now, if we'd all rise, please, I'm going to say this short little prayer in memory of Dave. "Dave, God saw you getting tired, and the cure was not to be. So He put His arms around you and whispered, 'Come to Me.' With tearful eyes, we watched you and saw you pass away. Although we loved you dearly, we could not make you stay. A golden heart stopped beating, hard-working hands at rest. God broke our hearts to prove to us He only takes the best. God looked around His garden and found an empty place. He then looked down upon the earth and saw your tired face." Amen. That's an Irish funeral prayer. Okay, Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilperson Byakowski. Okay, we have approval of our financials for 2020 for September. Are there any questions or anything you'd like to discuss to go over them?
I don't have any. I've got it.
Sorry?
I don't have them, and I've got it.
You don't?
I haven't received them. I've received it.
Email.
Oh, yeah. Well, I didn't. Yeah, I'm sorry, an email.
Okay.
If you'd like, I can just go over some brief.
Sure, that'd be great.
Sure. So, so far, per the projections, we've been looking at every quarter, basically, on the forecasting this year during COVID. The revenue is on track. We still have losses from sales tax. The latest sales tax payment only represents a 4% loss. However, we are still projecting larger-than-that losses for the next two payments with the unknown uncertainty of potential shutdown of businesses and the economy due to COVID. So, for cash flow reasons, we have not funded the reserves yet, but that's on our agenda to do. Community development spending was up because we are spending on reimbursable grant for a city center feasibility study. So that's all reimbursable expenses, but you'll notice that number is at 300%, which is a little out of whack. The BDC, we halved their payments when COVID hit. So we do feel we're in line to make their second payment to them of their $110,000 coming up here in December. Our retirement bill was basically on track of what we thought it would be for the year. So that was good news. It wasn't much higher than projected. The admin services budget looks slightly out of line. It's at 64%. And just remember, we're looking at financial statements that are six months in. That is because we paid all of our insurance at the beginning of the year, at the budget year. We went with a new broker this year and a new insurance company and saved $40,000 on the whole by bidding that out. All other department spending looks on track for the six-month mark. And that was my assessment of the financials.
Can you hand me some send me?
Absolutely.
Any other questions on that? Okay. Approval of the October 20 minutes? Any questions or concerns? Okay, we'll move forward. Assignment of agenda items. Resolution 75, 2020. Mr. Canely. Resolution 76, 2020. Mr. McInnes. Resolution 77, 2020. Mrs. Pacino. Resolution 78, 2020. Mr. Briggs. Resolution 79, 2020. Mr. McInnes. Resolution 80, 2020. Mr. Byakowski. Resolution 81, 2020. Mr. Canely. Resolution 82, 2020. Resolution 83, 2020. Mr. Briggs. And Resolution 84, 2020. Patty. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Paul. We've had eighty-four.
Eighty-four would be Mrs. Pacino. Any communications?
None tonight.
None tonight, thank you. The next city council meeting will be held Monday, November 23rd, 2020, at 7:00 PM at the City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, City Center. City Attorney Report?
Yes, sir. There's nothing specific to report on at this time. We are continuing to work on a variety of matters across the spectrum, but nothing specific to this point. Thank you.
City Manager Report?
Yep, a few things I wanted to touch on. I know you've all been watching the news and seeing the rise of COVID cases, not only in our community, but in neighboring communities. We appreciate everyone following the guidelines tonight, doing the temperature screenings and keeping your masks on while in the audience. Other bodies have gone to Zoom. We felt that we would take an interim step and do screening and try to keep numbers low at council meetings. You'll notice none of the department heads are here this evening. They're on the phone if there's any questions. We can certainly ask them to answer those questions. But we do have the majority of Monroe County and Erie County have moved into the governor's yellow zone. Businesses still stay open. However, if you're eating at a restaurant, you can only have four per table. Nonessential gatherings are reduced to 25 people or less. Capacities in all gathering places and houses of worship in those yellow zones moved down to 50%. Also, schools in the yellow zone are open, but they need to achieve a 20% weekly testing of in-person students and faculty. At this point, we don't have an indication if Genesee County is going to be moving into the yellow zone. But over the weekend, we had an excess of 35 new cases of COVID. And we're seeing spikes here larger than we saw back in March and April. So I just ask everyone to be extremely cautious, wear your mask, and do what you can do to help stop the spread. So that's the COVID update. Some other items I'm working on, along with other departments. We should be finishing up the city center feasibility study in the next few weeks. And we'll be ready to present that and move forward. That'll enable us to plan our project for the 1 million DRI spending at city center. Some of the concepts obviously outline fixing up the silos, the flooring, and different lighting on the interior of the city center, and different campus master planning, including the police station. The police station feasibility study is underway for the Elva Place location. That feasibility study came about, council voted last year and then reaffirmed it in July of this year to move forward with that feasibility study to look at the location at Elva Place. They're doing a needs assessment, finalizing the types of space that the police do need for that location. And we'll be moving forward with a report that we'll get to council. And our hope is that the initial projections we had back in 2015 will be lower after looking some other facilities in the area. Looking at other major public works projects coming up, looking at Jackson Square and choosing a consultant for that. Matt is working with Ray on that diligently. And also, we have coming up Design and Engineering for Harvester Richmond and Construction in 2022. They're still working on lead service upgrades. We are still working on the Ellet Station project. And they are hoping to close in December on all their financing to get moving towards Other updates for you, just a couple more. The Police Advisors Stakeholder Group has one or two more meetings before we start drafting the plan, which will then come to council and needs to be approved by April 1st and submitted to the governor's office. And lastly, department heads and managers and myself are working on pandemic operations planning, which will then be presented to the unions as per the legislation. So if there's any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Committee reports? Mrs. Pacino?
Very sure. When the scarecrow contest has finished, and actually, there were 51 scarecrows marching proudly down the street, which is an absolute record, and Eli Fisher won the contest. That is not a monetary contest. They are given money for advertising, is what it comes out to be. And a reminder that Christmas in the City is set for December 5th, which is a Saturday, from 2:00 to 6:00. And at 6:00 o'clock, there will be a parade this year.
Thank you, Patty. Any questions? Mrs. Parker, are there any public comments?
Yes, there are.
Okay. All speakers should have signed up in advance for the city clerk. Each speaker will use a podium. Please state your name, address, before beginning your statement. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. Council will not engage debate with the speaker. Speaker will address an issue only, not individuals, as per Roberts Rule of Order. First bell is 30 seconds left. Second bell, you're out of time.
Hi, I'm Paula Fisher, 104 Narromore Drive. I am on the City of Batavia Youth Board. I've been a member for over 10 years. I am Director of School-Based Health Programs for the University of Buffalo's School of Dental Medicine. I became involved with youth services years ago when I was asked to serve on the board after moving back to Batavia from Rochester. I grew up on the South Side and have very fond memories of the PARC program, having attended Kibbie and Pringle Parcs. I have advocated for children's oral health, devoting my career in public health, so serving on the board was a great fit. I have volunteered and provided oral health education, oral health kits at the PARC program and at the Summer Safe Carnival, giving out hundreds of toothbrushes and toothpaste to kids and families. My husband and I don't regret relocating from Rochester to Batavia to raise our family. It's a great place to raise a family. And what makes it a great place is all of the services and activities that we have for our youth. The Youth Bureau is more than just the summer rec program. Although the rec program is most well-known, serving hundreds of children every summer, providing a safe, fun, and educational programming, including lunch, which is a big help to many families. Other events and programmings under the City Youth Bureau is the Community Garden. So that has become very popular, and the beds have sold out most every year. And that's a great way for people to have safe gardens without pesticides and keeping fear out. And that's a community thing. So it's not just youth, it's other community members. We were instrumental in the National Night Out, now partnering with the Batavia City Police. We moved the youth center to the new location, the Liberty Center for Youth, and that has expanded space for youth programming. And it's a, the city church has a lot of programming there. It's very vibrant. And it helps the South Side, I would say, too, with bringing life back to that neighborhood. So that's been a great resource for youth because they're right down the street from Jackson School and not too far from the middle school. And we have a great partnership with the City of Batavia School District, that they will bus children at their school to the Liberty Center for Youth. Every summer, at the end of the summer rec program, there's a Summer Safe Carnival where community agencies are there, and that's open to the community. I've had my UV dental table there in the past. And every year, we partner with the county for the Youth and Adult Volunteer Awards Banquet. And that's a great opportunity to highlight our youth in the community and all the volunteering that they do, and adults. And that has worked out through school districts, we partner with the county, and so it's every school district in the county makes nominations. We have city youth and county youth members looking over the nominations and awarding these youth awards, and it's usually a really nice dinner at Cherry Hills. We also have a partnership with ARC for Saturday programs. In the past, the youth have gone to the nursing home to do bingo and crafts with the residents. I've gone to the senior center with our youth in the past to make Christmas cards for servicemen. Again, we have a great relationship with the city school district. The YMCA partners with us with the Liberty Center for Youth. In the past, we've had swimming with, as part of the summer rec program through the Y. That kind of fell on hard times because of financing issues. So that, I don't think, happened last year. We've had open gym nights, basketball games with the City of Batavia Police Department. And we had a grant through the tennis, for the tennis program for the summer rec program. So all of these programs provide a sense of pride and community for the city residents. So I'm here tonight to ask city council, let's work together to address the budget issues during these trying times. We want to come together and see if there's a way we can be mindful of the city budget without decimating youth services. You know, a reduced level of service may be appropriate at this time with time to rebuild in the future. So we're going to be sending out a Zoom meeting invitation. Thank you for your time.
David Twitchell?
Evening, everyone. I'm David Twitchell, and I reside at 166 Summit Street here in the city. And I am the current Youth Board President for the city. And I just want to extend an invitation to all city council members, that we are open and we are willing to cooperate with the city, and we are willing, as an advisory board, to help guide the process. And we know that, like Paula said, with these COVID restrictions and the tough economic times that we're facing, that we know that the city's facing great challenges. But there are times when we feel that there's somewhat of a disconnect between the boards and the city council. And I'm here tonight to open and maybe knock down some of those barriers. And tomorrow, I'll be putting together an email for each and every one of you that will list all our contact information. And if you have any questions about what the city youth services do, or what the board does, or any ideas, because we have a lot of ideas. Myself and Paula have been involved with the city youth for over 10 years. So if you have any questions or any ideas, reach out to us, and we will do the same to you. Because we want to work together to make sure that the city youth are taken care of as much as possible, even under these tough economic conditions. Thank you.
Evening, everybody. I'm Andrew Fisher, residing at 104 Narromore Drive. And for two years back in high school, I was the youth board member, actually Vice President of the Youth Board from 2010 to 2012. And also, after that, I worked at the summer rec program for five years during my summer breaks from Canisius College while I was getting my MBA in accounting. A lot of our youth programs, specifically summer rec programs, is a great way for youth in our community to, you know, interact with one another, interact with, you know, especially the rec leaders, you know. It felt like, you know, while I was there, I was a pretty good, or I could say a good example for all the youth that were attending or part. Also, instilled in me a sense of leadership and a sense of empathy towards some of the kids, obviously, who are from tougher situations. So, really, just taught me to listen to every side of the story. So, you know, when we, when I heard about youth services possibly, you know, changing here in the city, just then stood right with me via youth services, especially summer rec program, as a way for youth, especially myself and others in the community, to give the ball. You know, working for the city, it was a fantastic experience. Really, you know, taught us, you know, accountability. We were able to organize our own schedules. So getting that experience at, you know, 18, 19-years-old, it's pretty valuable for your future. And also, you know, with my MBA in accounting, I was able to look at some of the past city budgets on the website. And especially last year, you know, I might have seen that summer recreation came in below budget. So it just doesn't make sense, to me at least, to cut a lot of the services, you know, just because we're going through some trying times, obviously. I feel like, you know, a reduced level, you know, maybe not in the PARC program, but, you know, John Kennedy in Jackson is a good, you know, compromise there because that's where most of the kids are for summer school. I feel like, you know, we don't have to eliminate things altogether, but, you know, just kind of tempering things as, you know, we navigate through these trying times. It would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Sammy DeSalvo. I live at 111 Main Street. Thank you all for speaking now, and thank you for the COVID updates on Batavia. I appreciate that. So I want to talk about a larger issue that seems to be facing council and city government as a whole. And that is that we've seen a lack of communication from city officials and from council as a whole. Elected officials are meant to represent and listen to citizens, not to ignore what citizens say. Elected officials are meant to represent and listen to citizens, not to pursue personal interests. Elected officials are meant to represent and listen to citizens. This lack of communication from our city government is not acceptable. The past few months have provided many examples of council's persistent refusal to listen to and communicate with residents. Someone came before council two weeks ago with a concern, and not a single one of you said a single thing to her until it was one-on-one afterwards with the paper when she was already gone. I think that that is a disgrace, and I think that that speaks loudly to the type of politician that we have leading the city, that they can't talk to somebody in public forum. All citizens deserve to be responded to regardless of their concern, if it has already been taken care of, or whatever the situation is. So some of the things that you all have not listened to citizens on the past just three or four months. Dear committee over the summer, stuff was miscommunicated through them multiple times. The youth board, just this week and the past couple of weeks, there was not communication before decisions were made. These are two committees that council put together. Both committees at council decided not to inform of things happening until after decisions were made. What's the point of having a committee if you're going to make decisions without them? The farmer's market, which is currently turning into a media and Facebook fight. There's also the lack of listening to the community over the construction of where the new police station should be. And there is lack of listening to the community over what to do with the mall, when the entire community says, "Get that thing out of city hands, stop investing money in it," and you all want to double down on it, which I will never understand. People did not want that mall when it replaced Beautiful Main Street back in the late 60s, early 70s, and they don't want it in 2020. I want to know why these conversations are moving forward without the voices of citizens being involved? Why are committees being ignored? And why are citizens being ignored? When did everybody forsake ourselves as elected officials? When was it decided that sitting in a position of power meant disregarding citizens, their concerns, and the voice of people that you all are meant to represent? When was it decided that personal interests and desires of city officials and council members mattered more than the desires of the people of Batavia? On the city's org chart, citizens are at the top, followed by council, and then from council splits off the city manager, boards of communication, and one more that I'm forgetting, the attorney. But lately, it seems as if council is now at the top, then the city manager, and then citizens are at the bottom. And I think it needs to adapt to how it was supposed to be. What I'm asking for today is for council and the city as a whole to start communicating better with residents. Residents have complained to me that no council members have social media to share their real kind thoughts on Batavia, to which I have no response, other than it is much easier to be a mouse and hive than it is to speak out and risk being burned. The city has posted roughly 12 to 15 times from December 2018 to July 2019. I complained about it. After I complained about it, whoever is doing this, thank you very much. They've been out posting every couple of days. So thank you to whoever is managing the city's social media. That's a great way to communicate with the masses. As this meeting began, we heard a bunch of financial information about positive things that you all are doing with the budget, making sure that we're not going into serious debt. Let's put forth the same level of excitement toward listening to residents that we are just making sure that the budget is staying as positive as it can be. I'm going to say it one last time, and I'm excited to hear what is said about me this time, but elected officials are meant to represent and listen to citizens. Thank you.
John Roach, 116 Grand View Terrace. I wanted to address what was just said. I think council does listen. I think that was pointed out. We just had an election. We had two different points of view. And the other point of view won by 600-something votes pending the recount of the absentee ballots. But I wanted to say something about that farmer's market. They're over there at Elva Place at the good graces of city council. You allow them to be there. They don't pay user fees. They don't pay property taxes or anything else. And we're going to put a police station somewhere. Now, Elva wasn't the first choice. It wasn't the second choice, but it's the current choice. We already own the property. Environmental issues are going to be a lot less. There's already utilities there. Let the farmer's market move. Now, some people have said, "Well, let the police move into Pennies." Well, you know, let's take a lot of property off the tax rules. They pay property taxes, but they also pay lawn maintenance fees under the new law. Let the farmer's market contact the owners of the Pennies building. Let them pay, right? Let them move into Pennies. It's a huge place. Great place for a mall, for a farmer's market. Why should the city have to foot the bill and relocate the police station somewhere else, maybe another $500,000 or something dollars to buy a piece of property? It just doesn't make any sense. The farmer's market's nice. There'll be somebody that has to walk a little further wherever you put it, where it is now. Washington Towers could walk fairly close. If it was over at School and Center Street, 400 Towers could walk a little, a shorter distance. Wherever it is, somebody's going to have to walk in a liking, they're going to have to cross Route 5 or maybe 98. So it's a no-win. But the city, wherever you put the thing, somebody's not going to like it, whether it's Kmart, over there at Center and School, where it is right now. So let them move. They're a private group. It's not the city's responsibility to maybe send them to buy a place from the B. I like the farmer's market. I'd use it. But I'm more concerned over the taxpayers saving the money to put that police station on property the city already owns. Again, it's not the first or second choice, but those choices didn't work out. We can't get it. So that's it.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Council's response to the public comments. Mr. McGinnis.
Counsel President. This isn't about the youth board per se, but it amounts to, on Wednesday the fourth, the youth bureau board sent a letter to the editor. That's all well and good. Everyone can do that. However, when a board sends a letter, it should encompass everyone at, it's on the board. That includes the council representative, myself. At that meeting, the director was there and our manager. Now, we never received a copy of that letter, nor did we find out this letter even existed until we read about it in the paper. If you're an elected or appointed official, and you're on a board, a public board, it is incumbent upon you to make sure that everyone on that board, whether they agree or disagree, know that correspondence is going out to the public. If not, the public gets, it's confused when they hear two different sets of things. All I'm saying that when you do it unilaterally and basically conduct a rogue operation without informing everyone, it looks bad for everyone concerned. Part of our job is to make sure the public stays informed. We can't stay informed if we don't know what's going on, and we read about it in the paper. Now, at the time, the existing board members could have spoken to us at the meeting and said, "Here's our points of view, and we'd like to make sure that this is heard to the public." No one is going to censure or stop a report. The idea is to make sure everyone is aware of it going out. Again, we owe the public to speak from either a unified voice, or at least if it's not unified, everyone gets a chance to say their piece. That's it.
Ms. Christian?
No, I meant he's done.
Oh.
Because they, some people couldn't hear you because the mics are in there. I'm sorry. But this is, I think his, no. Oh, anyways, Paul, did you say me?
Yep.
I'd like some answers to, how many children attend that youth bureau over on Liberty Street? Who can answer that for me?
Between thirty or fifty, depending on the day. Sometimes it's low as five, but it has not been open since school shut down in March.
Right. I was going to say, we had reports close to a hundred at times at that youth center because I live down the street, and I see tons of kids out there, okay? Now, is there going to be any cost to the YMCA for any of these kids to attend?
So, right now, we have a, if I could just explain, right now, or pre-COVID, we have a partnership with the YMCA where the city has staff members, between three and four staff members at the center. And the YMCA also pledged, with no cost to the city, three or four staff members to make sure we had appropriate ratios for the students that attended there.
Now, do we have any that are over at the center for the youth on Liberty Street anymore that we have hired?
We have no youth bureau employees at this time.
Right. Okay. Is there a reason, or is it because of financial situations or what? What is the reason?
Right. So, well, we, I shouldn't say that. We do have a contracted director through the county, that we still have that person. However, our program coordinator
Right.
has taken another job, and the part-time youth were laid off during the hired freeze.
Is that Lydia?
Yes.
She took another job over at the YMCA, didn't she?
No.
No, I thought she did. I thought I heard that because that's really upsetting to me.
The Genesee County Sheriff's Office.
Okay. And now, it was closed because of COVID, right?
Correct.
Okay. I see people at Walmart. I see people downtown. I see them at the grocery store. I see people here. I see people everywhere in the city. Those kids can wear a mask like anyone else in the city, and they, I'm quite sure, would stop anyone from coming in without a mask, and I'm quite sure they would be cleaning and disinfecting the facility for the kids over there. Now, they're playing basketball on Tuesday nights. I haven't heard of a soul from that center that had COVID, okay? The resolution, what happened to the resolution that we were supposed to have in front of us tonight for this? Do you know?
There was no resolution.
There was no resolution.
I thought, there was a, if I could, maybe I'll give a little history here, but during budget cuts, we caught summer recreation because of COVID, and as they started to ramp up at the youth center and get ready, we were unable to hire part-time people. The people we had originally didn't come back. So, the situation left us with no city employees to run that day-to-day operation, especially after Lydia left, and it left us with absolutely no employees. So, as a way to try to move forward, look at cost-saving measures for the taxpayers and also providing the same level of service, I engaged in discussions with the YMCA to see if they could staff the center. And until we come to any type of preliminary contract terms, you'll have nothing in front of you. And at such point, you would have a presentation by the YMCA on the programming that they can provide for us that is the same or better than what we're providing today at a lower cost to residents.
Yeah, that's another thing. It was mentioned on the Batavian that we've got to think of the taxpayers. We sure as hell don't think about the taxpayers when it comes to, oh, I swear, Elka Street over there for the trail, especially when four-thirty at night, it's going to be dark in the wintertime, dark in the summertime around nine o'clock. It's ridiculous. We don't think about salary increases either, now, do we?
Can we stay on task? Stay on the question, not?
Why not? I'm just telling you, we don't seem to think about salary increases or giving extra money for our services.
That's enough. Anyone else have, Mr. Canelli?
I've just got a couple, a couple comments, a couple for the youth bureau, and then I'd like to address one of the other speaker's concerns as well. But I can't speak for the entire council. I can speak for John Canelli, myself, much like Paula that spoke about the youth programs in the city. I grew up every day of my life as a kid at MacArthur Park, Monday through Friday. I spent all day there except to go home for lunch because when I was a kid, they didn't provide lunch. The youth bureau is an invaluable gem that we have here in the city, and I have no intention on decreasing the services that the youth bureau offers. What we pay to run the youth bureau is miniscule in the whole budget picture. So, I can assure anybody that's here tonight that's concerned about council doing away with the youth bureau or doing away with the services that we provide our local youth, I can guarantee if any of my council colleagues brought that up, I would definitely be dead set against it, and I don't think there's anybody here tonight that is against that. For some reason, I know we all depend on social media, and we read the Batavian and the Daily News online. I spend a lot of time on the computer myself. Don't believe everything that you read, number one, and try not to formulate your opinion as to what the city council's actions are going to be based on what you're reading on social media. We didn't have any discussion, that I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, that we're going to do away with the youth bureau, or we're going to cut any services. Correct me if I'm wrong, maybe I misunderstood or I missed something, Rachel. Did Jocelyn not come to us as a county employee contracted with the city to share services? Did she not come to us and request that we, that we cut that contract out?
That's correct.
Oh, yeah. And for some reason, it seems like the public is under the impression that we, as the city, want to cut that out. And the county manager also made public comment, that I read, that they were going to kind of leave it in our lap first to see what move we made first. I want the public to realize that this was the county that came to the city, or at least the county employee that serves in that position, and requested that maybe we could discontinue that contract. That was prior to us realizing that Lydia was resigning from that position as well, if I, if my recollection is correct. So, now it's a whole different picture. And there has been no decision made that we are going to end this contract with the county. This is in discussions, okay? We're looking at all possibilities. Rachel is looking into other possibilities as well as she approached the YMCA to see what they might be able to do to offer as good of services, if not better services. So, we're looking at our options, okay? There hasn't been any decisions made. There has been, it seems like, for whatever reason, the board has not been in the communication circle yet, but I would only assume that at some point, when the decisions are going to be made, that we would look at our advisory board and say, "These are some of our thoughts. What do you guys think?" I would at least hope that that would happen. And I would, as a councilperson, I would require that to happen if the rest of my colleagues agreed with me. So, please don't, please don't have a knee-jerk reaction to this based on what you're reading in social media or in the news. This is all still in the talking stages. Nothing has happened. No programs have been cut. The youth bureau or the youth center has been closed down due to COVID, and maybe, like Rosemary says, maybe it's time to look at that. I don't know. That should be part of the discussions as well. As things start to open up, we can look at that. We're now obviously on the rise again with COVID, so maybe this isn't a good time to look at that. I don't know. But these are all discussions to be had. So, it's, I'm just saying, don't have a knee-jerk reaction to this. We're talking about it. In regards to one of the other comments that was made, that the city council does not listen to the residents. I take offense to that comment, Mr. DeSalvo. I listen to my city residents. I listen to the ones that contact me, okay? I don't go by what I read on social media because I don't believe most of what I read on social media, okay? My colleague, or my constituents call me, as I'm sure they do my colleagues, when they have concerns, or they send me an email, or they show up on my front door, my front steps, and believe me, that has happened quite often. So, the people that call me, I respond to. I respond to their concerns. Rachel can attest to that. If I get an email, I immediately forward it to her to look into it for me, and she, as soon as she gets an answer, responds back to me, and then I forward that back to my constituent. So, I listen to the people that voted me in, and I'm pretty sure that most of my colleagues on council do the same. They have much more active words than I do and a lot more problems than I do to deal with, and they deal with them well. So, we listen. We had an advisory board that looked into the police station location. We went with the recommendation, and we attempted to buy that piece of property, and that, those negotiations fell through at the time. So, we are now looking at the other suggested locations that that advisory committee had advised us to consider. So, there again, we listen to our advisory committee that was put together for that. I believe Al served on that committee as well. So, we are listening to the community. We are listening to our constituents. We respond to the, to public speakers when we have a response to give them. If we don't respond to them, that's usually, at least in my circumstances, usually because I don't have an answer for them, so I have no reason to respond to them until I can get an answer. And a lot of times, that's how we have to act as well, so we make sure that we get them the proper answer. So, I feel that we do listen to the people that vote us in, and sometimes, as a council, we have to make the hard decisions that don't necessarily seem like the popular decision, but we, as voted in, you have given us your confidence that you trust that we make the right decisions. So, we're the ones that are educated on that particular topic. We're the ones that have spent a great deal of time educating ourselves on that topic. So, we have to make a decision that's best for the community, best for the city of Batavia. So, it's sometimes a tough, tough job for us to have to do that, but we don't do it lightly. We do it with a lot of time involved, having our staff look into things for us, our city manager making recommendations to us after she's done the research that she has to do to advise us. And so, that's the way we operate on city council, and I think we do a pretty darn good job of it. The city of Batavia is in very, very good shape right now. As we hear financially, our financial reports every year are always triple-A reports. Our reserve funds are very healthy, so we don't have to borrow money every time we need a major piece of equipment. We are working very far into the block now, and at one time, shortly before I came on council, we were working, the council was working in red. We are in a healthy position as a city, and so I just wanted to clear that up, that I feel that it's unfair to say that we don't respond to our constituents.
I have to agree with John. With the farmer's market, we own the property. Why would we buy another piece of land to put the police station on there? That's common sense that we wouldn't do that. And I coach hockey. I coach baseball. I'm all for the youth. Like John says, we're not going to cut the youth. We will never do that. And I also take offense to being called a mouse because I'm not on social media. Mr. DeSalvo, you have not a clue what we do in here, and just what you do and what you see, what you sit back there. So, I take offense to that, okay? Ms. Briggs?
I want to put you back on my knees. I really take offense to the fact that I don't listen to my constituents. Let me tell you something. I have, I have a lot of problems in my ward, and I'm telling you, my constituents, they know. They call me Monday through Sunday, anytime. I'm telling you, I've gotten calls at eight in the morning, and if I'm not home, I have a machine. They can leave a message on my machine. I get back to them immediately. I listen to their concerns. I go to the property department, and then I get back to them as soon as I can. I've gone to their house. Now with COVID, they don't want that, and that's fine. But they tell me the problem, and like I said, there's times when they'll say, you know, I'm having this problem, but I don't want to call the hotline. I don't want to do this. I tell them, "I will call." I never give their name. I give my name. I tell them the problem, and I said, "You get back to me and let me know what I can tell them." I really take offense to the fact that we have someone that's saying that I don't listen to my constituents. That, that's appalling to me. That's appalling.
Mr. Byakovsky?
Yes, I'd like to respond, and I've heard all sides of it. Number one, as far as not responding, council member Briggs and all of us here, I spent three hours on the phone yesterday discussing issues with various people to include one county legislature. Today, I spent two hours on the phone. Topics of conversation were youth bureau. Now, the way it works, the citizens are at the top of the pyramid, period, end of story. The individual citizens here, they call the shots. They like us to represent us. Anybody here doesn't believe in that, watch how quick you'll be replaced. They will do it, and trust me, they can, and they have. So, then when it comes to us, we're policymakers. We don't run the city day-to-day. We don't go down to the highway department and put the gas in the truck and count the gallons. We're the policymakers. Comes to the youth bureau, that's policy, whether we're going to have it or get out of it. That's policy. That's not up to the administration to decide. That's up to us. And if we make the wrong decision, I guess some of us just won't be here in the future. Now, there were comments made about the farmer's market. Well, the police station, it fits into the master plan. That Alba Place parking lot in our master plan was designated for future construction. One of the things with the farmer's market, we initially backed that because it was part of bid. The Business Improvement District ran the farmer's market. Now, lo and behold, a couple of years ago, the bid got out of it. They just gave everything to a private corporation called Genesee Farmer's Market or Batavia Farmer's Market, whatever. So, I had the city manager at the time look into it, and he says, I says, "Who runs the farmer's market?" Everybody here thought it was bid. Well, it wasn't bid. We were deceived, and that isn't right. But it worked out, and we were told at that time, "Well, it's a not-for-profit." Now, I just got an email the other day, "Hey, we filed for a not-for-profit status. It's still a separate..." It's still a separate corporation. It doesn't have a lease on the property. They've been using the property, I think two years ago, they took in about $25,000 to decide, they decided what to do with the profits and all that, which is fine. I've spoke with the city manager. I offered her some, my personal ideas on some solutions to this. We haven't been ignoring it. One of the problems seems to be blogging. Now, no council member here, any of their personal blogs on any social media represents council. That represents their personal opinion. And this is where the problems start and occur with communications. If I put a blog on the Batavia, and that's my opinion. That doesn't represent council. Council might not even know what I'm doing. But they're, they're being held accountable for some of this, and that's not right. I'm sorry, that's just not right. And with the Youth Bureau, part of the problem is, there was a resol- resolution to have the county take over the Youth Bureau or something. The county asked if we voted on it. And I had two legislators call me and say, oh, we didn't vote on it. So they tabled the resolution, and everybody saw that. And they said, what's going on? Well, I can't answer it. I don't know what's going on. So we set the policy. If we set a bad policy, the voters can get rid of us. Policy gets implemented by the administration, the management. Police station, we looked at several, several different locations at the time, and there were other options. As Mr. Cannelli pointed out, some of them fell through, and Mr. McGinnis pointed out. It happens, it's business. But we're not going to go out and spend a half million dollars for a piece of land when we have a piece of land that can be used. What, what's going to go on, though, next year? I'm sure they'll want to get in there and drill some, take some core samples, do survey work, and it'll all be part of the engineering proposal. And Mr. DeSalvo, I know what your concerns are. And I think the dear committee, that whole thing turned out to be a nightmare for everybody involved, and I apologize for that. It shouldn't have happened. My, my bigger concern is, when we use committees and we use boards, let's treat them fairly and include them in the decision-making process so that they are included. I, I don't like making a decision and then telling the board about it after the fact. So my, my concern is, why would anybody even want to serve on boards? And one other thing, looking at John Roach, one, I think it was on a Sunday morning, I saw him and legislator Delio walking across the parking lot, and they were looking at the Pennies building. And they said, hey, maybe we ought to look at this as a police station. They took their time, citizen and legislator, to go and look at something, come up with a suggestion. It was looked at, but we even discuss, we don't, the owners of the property aren't Pennies. And when we're talking about the mall, we own a few properties here from property tax. We're in the process of trying to sell them. I agree. I don't want to see the city own anything other than the concourse, and hopefully someday we can get out of that. But we can't go, it was looked at a few years ago, eminent domain, the whole mall. My God, that would cost a lot of money.
Council? Only because you mentioned me. When legislator Delio and I were at Pennies, we thought it was open for a sale. And neither one of us were looking at Pennies to beat a police station. We both think that's a stupid, really stupid idea. We just happened to run across you because we thought it was exposed.
Sorry about that, please. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes. Last week, as both the city manager and councilman Briggs can, can attest, I spent two hours over tea with Beth Carr at our, at my, our house, my house, talking about the farmer's market, and Alba Place, and the police, and everything else. But a lot of people either don't realize or refuse to realize is that every single member of this, this council spends an inordinate amount of time with their constituents in private, either, either a personal visit or a phone call. We don't, we don't, we don't have to speak up in, in public. A lot of these people would rather talk to you privately and sit down. As in, as in best case, I invited her to the house and over tea, again, for two hours, we talked about her, her issues with the market and what, what possible resolutions. These, these private, private scenes that all these council people take on is, is on their own time. And it's not broadcast. We don't publish it in, in the Daily. We just do it as part of our job. Bob spends endless time with a lot of people talking that he never brings up to the public. It's, it's, it's very quiet, one-on-one conversations, whether they're in person or over the phone, as does every single individual here. So people have to realize that, while we may not get an immediate response, and John was right, because we want to take time to make sure we, we evaluate the answer. We, we do, we do hear our constituents, and we listen to them.
Councilmember Bailey?
I'm sorry.
I would just like to extend an invitation again to the Youth Board. I came to you in good faith with ideas on our situation and our strategy. And when you attended the meeting, we sat there, you listened to what I had to say, you listened to my ideas. We had great dialogue. And I'm willing to continue that dialogue with you. But I prefer we did it in a committee setting and not go around the committee setting with emails and letters outside of the people on that committee and to the media, so we can really achieve something. You members are great board members. I know you're here from the youth. I have young children. I absolutely believe in it. But we have to think differently about this. I'm willing to come back, sit with you guys. And this time at the meeting, please speak up. Because when I left that meeting, everyone was in agreement to the strategy that I was going to go look into to bring to council. Thank you.
If you're addressing me, I want to repoll.
We don't have.
We can't do that.
Oh, no, repoll with the media, and you can read it now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, Patty, one more?
Yes, aren't you all waiting for me to wrap this up? Okay, here's what you need to know. I'm not offended in the least, because you have every right to say what you're going to say. So there you are. I learned from a great person, Bear Cat Cat Hancock, who taught me to let it roll off your back, live with it. Not everybody's going to agree. I want everybody to know that I also listen to everybody on Jackson Square, Youth Bureau, farm markets and all that. I have two things that, that I really want to get across. Whatever happens to the Youth Bureau, I want to see that youth summer program stay in the city, at the parks. I don't want to see it go to the Y, because the whole idea is you go out the front door, you go to your little park right down the street, and that's the way it is. Secondly, out of communications, probably instead of saying, we're looking into that, we're looking into that, we should have come up with some ideas and said, here are some possibilities of where the farmer's market could go, and then people wouldn't be so upset. So part of it's our problem, part of it's your problem. The whole idea is, I'm tired of everybody arguing about it. Better that we all just talk it out and get it done. Thank you very much. I'm through.
You might not be offended, but I don't want to be accused of something that I'm not, that I'm not doing something.
Thank you all for your comments. Unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Okay, moving on to new business. Resolution 75, 2020, Councilman Cannelli.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution establishing the city of Batavia as lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, seeker, and issuing a negative declaration.
Any discussion? For a second? Any discussion? No discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cannelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Pacino?
Resolution 76, 2020, Councilman McGinnis.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to adapt and ordnance, amending chapter 190 entitled zoning of the City of Batavia Municipal Code to amend 1-1 industrial zone to include public garage business with special use permits.
Second, Mrs. Christian? Any discussion? No discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Cannelli?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 77, 2020, Mrs. Pacino.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution accepting public dedication of Carrollwood Drive Extension, also known as Clinton Garden subdivision, Part 21A.
Second, Mrs. Christian? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
Cannelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 78, 2020, Mrs. Briggs.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I move a resolution for approval of contract increase for Elektraeal project.
Second, Mr. Byakowski? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
No.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Cannelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Resolution 79, 2020, Mr. McGinnis.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to enter into an agreement with, with a new wave energy corporation for the purchase of natural gas.
One second. Mr. Cannelli? Roll call, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Cannelli?
Yes.
Do you have passes? Resolution 80, 2020, Mr. Byakowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution amending the 2021 general fund budget to recognize national grid urban corridor grant funds on behalf of Savarino Companies LLC and the Elektraeal Station Project.
Do you have a second? Briggs? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Cannelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
No.
Karaz?
Yes.
Passes, thank you. Resolution 81, 2020, Mr. Cannelli.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution authorizing the adoption of the LGS-1 retention and disposition schedule.
Second, Mr. Karaz? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cannelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Pacino?
Resolution 82, 2020, Mr. Karaz.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to amend the 2020, 2021 Police Department Budget to reflect the receipt of a stop DWI grant amendment in the amount of $5,000 to address the crimes of driving while intoxicated and/or driving while ability impaired by drugs during specified crackdown periods.
Have a second? Mrs. Christian? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Cannelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Resolution 83, 2020, Mrs. Briggs.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution acceptance of rotary grant and budget amendment to the 2020, 2021 Youth Bureau budget to reflect the receipt of funds.
Have a second? Mr. Karaz? Discussion?
Yes, I, I have, I have some questions, okay? Number one is, who will be purchasing the kayaks?
It will be purchased through the city, and then it will be gifted to the county.
Okay.
So we have no liability for the kayaks or the docking.
Then why are we giving the county the money?
When Mrs. Sikorsky was here at the last meeting, she discussed that because it is the city rotary, they wanted to do the grant with the city. But after myself and the county manager looked at it, it'll be housed in a county park.
No, no. Why are we giving the actual money, transferring the funds to the county if we're buying the kayaks?
We're not transferring the funds. We're transferring the material after purchase, so the kayaks and the docking.
Because the resolution here implies that we're transferring the funds.
No, it'll be all purchased through the city and the city procurement policy. The city will give the equipment from this grant to the Genesee County Parks, who will assist in the maintenance and storage of program equipment once purchased, and they will be responsible for the insurance for that as well.
Then who will own the kayaks?
Genesee County. We will not own them.
Okay, because I spoke with a couple legislators, and they asked me about it, and they said, they have no intentions of owning anything. The city will own it. They'll just store it for us. So there seems to be some gray areas here. Who will be instructing in the use of kayaks?
I know the YMCA was a partner in it. And if we, when we have youth programming, again, through whatever means we do, I think it would be, it would be incumbent upon that person to have an instructor there if there were great children out there.
We're getting, we're going to buy them kayaks and gift it to the, very simple.
That's correct.
Easy.
Yeah, because we did not want.
We have no responsibility. All anyone.
The county doesn't know anything about us giving, donating kayaks.
But I don't, I hate to say I don't know that that's our, Rosemary's.
And the other question is, who, there'll probably be plastic throwaway kayaks, you know, type you buy at most stores today, the inexpensive ones.
know, type you buy at most stores today, the inexpensive ones, but the longer they're in the sun, the shorter the shelf life. I kayak, so I'm familiar with them.
They are building a shed. Paul Osborne at County Parks was building a shed and a place to store them.
Right, but during the day, they'll be out in the sun, accidents happen, they get cracks and all that. Who will be responsible for replacing?
We would not be. The city would not be responsible moving forward. We're, we're basically acting as a pass-through to accept the grant, make the purchase, and then gift these to the county to be housed at the county park, along with the docking system we discussed at the last meeting that has the handicap sensibility.
I'm just surprised the county legislature doesn't know they're going to be owning kayaks. Somebody, somebody, somewhere is going to be running an instructing program. And, you know, they just thought Paul Osborne apparently told the one legislator he was just storing them. That was his total involvement. He was going to store them.
Our vote is to gift them to the county, not to own them.
We're not owning them. We're just going to gift them to the county.
Right, but I, I think.
The county takes over.
I think the county should know about this.
I'm sure they do know.